Good evening. Welcome to our August 12, 2013 work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken during this meeting. Tonight, there are three items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. I have had a request, I know we've got some public comment on item number one, but I'd like to let Carter go ahead and present that item, and then we'll take questions and comments after that, if that's okay. You okay with that, Chris?
I didn't hear what you said.
Okay. We're gonna do comments after item number one.
I think that probably makes sense.
Okay, anyway, we'll, sure. Okay, city clerk, if you wouldn't mind following the first item.
First item is discussion of concept plans for Hopewell at Bethany Way, Bethany Bend project. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we wanted to go through a discussion on the concept plans for the intersection improvements at Bethany Bend, Bethany Way, and Hopewell Road. So this is an opportunity for you to provide comments at this point. We've had some very good public input. And before we bring forward any kind of final recommendation for you, we just wanted to have an opportunity for you to see what we've presented to the public, see the comments that we've gotten back from the public on the proposals, and to provide any comment that you may have on it. So, one of the things that we do each year was we try to get a intersection improvement project under construction, one in final design and one in concept design. This is our annual concept design that we've got now. If you look back at the CTP, which really lays out kind of the master plan for how we need to work through these particular projects, the items in yellow are the ones that we have currently underway either in construction or at some phase of design. And so the Hopewell Bethany one was the next intersection that really had come up on the proposed list. And so we're bringing that through on the concept to look at some alternatives in improving the operation of that intersection. So we began this project back in February of 2013. And part of that process, we go ahead and we do a property boundary survey and a topo survey of the area so that even through the concept plan, we can get a better idea of potential impacts that the various proposals may have. We developed a number of concept alternatives. Gresham Smith &amp; Partners was involved in doing that. And Eric Rickard and Nathan Gomez are here tonight representing Gresham Smith. We had a public meeting on July 2nd is when we started our online public comment period. So we had a survey out there that was available to everybody to answer a number of questions on the overall project, favorable alternatives, and provide any comment or feedback that they may want to on the overall project. And we'll give you a copy of those comments here this evening so that you can see what type of information we got back from that process. Then we held a public information meeting here on July 17th. Informal meeting that we allowed all the public to kind of come in, look at the proposed alternatives, and again, provide any kind of input or feedback to the alternatives that we were presenting. And again, the purpose for the project was it was one of the key intersections identified in the CTP. When you look at the existing operations out there, the delays at the intersections we're looking at at Hopewell Bethany Bend operates currently at a level of service F in both the AM and PM. And again, as we've talked about in previous intersection projects, the intersections are graded based on the level of delay, ranging from A to F with A being an operationally, very good operational characteristics to F being a dysfunctional one. That being said, F, there could be varying levels of F. So based on delay, essentially, you're looking at something in the order of 80 seconds worth of delay, which I know doesn't seem like a lot sitting here, but in a vehicle, it's a substantial amount. And so, once you get to 80 seconds, you're a level F, but you can have varying degrees of that level moving on forward. We're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of probably four minutes of delay at this intersection, so it's a pretty substantial level of F on this one. Hopewell and Bethany Way currently operating at a level of service E in the morning and level of service B in the evening. And Hopewell at Bethany Oaks, a level of service D in the morning and a level of E in the evening. And so we've got three intersections in relatively close proximity to each other that we're trying to work on improving the operational characteristics of, which makes it a very challenging intersection. Some of the other things that we look at on these intersections, as we've discussed before, are accidents and speeds at the intersections. The development of the high school at Kings Ridge and Cambridge High School has kind of put a bigger focus on the east-west connectivity that wasn't necessarily there when we did the CTP back in 2009. So that's another component that we look at as involved in the overall design. And then access to Bethany Oaks. Bethany Oaks, sitting right there in between Bethany Bend and Bethany Way, creates an additional challenge at this particular intersection that we have to look at and consider and make sure that we try to improve access to that neighborhood rather than impede it, so. Each, with each of these projects, we go through a number of different alternatives. Some don't necessarily pan out, some because of cost impacts, or just aren't operationally proper. We generally rule those out relatively early in the process. For this particular one, we always have the no build. The no build scenario, when we just looked at the level of services as they exist today. In the future, we look out at 2035 in the future, the level of service or the operation of all three of those intersection goes to F, whether it's morning or evening. It just becomes more dysfunctional. We did look at an alternative with unsignalized, just addition of turn lanes. Would give us the opportunity to signalize one or both of those intersections in the future when they so warranted it. They currently don't warrant intersection or signalization, so the near-term opening day solution would be the installation of just turn lanes on all those approaches. We looked at an alternative that provided for a single roundabout located at Bethany Oaks. The interesting thing about this is, in order to really make it operationally significant, the left turns from both Bethany Bend and Bethany Way would be prevented. In other words, when you get to Bethany, when you get to Hopewell Road on either Bethany Bend or Bethany Way, you couldn't make a left turn on Hopewell Road. You'd be forced to make a right turn, you'd go down to come around the roundabout, and then head in the appropriate direction on Hopewell Road. So even though those rough turn movements are relatively small, as we'll see a little bit later in the presentation, they have a pretty big operational impact right now. So that one left turning movement, the delay on that left turn movement really tends to back up the queue on both Bethany Bend and Bethany Way, which really has an impact on the overall operational characteristics of the intersection. And then the other alternative that we looked at was a dual roundabout, one at Bethany Way and one at Bethany Bend. So when we looked at the overall operations of the intersection, we're looking at about a little more than 15,000 vehicles per day. If you looked at how that's distributed on each of the ones, each of the approaches, Hopewell Road is about 57% of those vehicles, Bethany Bend 26, Bethany Way 25, and Bethany Oaks is about 2%. So of all the vehicles coming in, all the 15,000 vehicles that enter this project, 57% are coming in on Hopewell. And you can see the percentages on Bethany Bend and Bethany Way. And just to kind of give you an idea about what happens in the peak hour. So in the morning peak hour, 7:15 to 8:15, we're looking at about a little over 1,300 vehicles that we're dealing with. The majority of those are coming southbound on Hopewell Road. You can see on Bethany Way, we have 22% that of the traffic makes a right turn onto Hopewell. And less than 1%, that's that left turn movement that would be restricted with a single roundabout. And then on Bethany Bend, you can see that left turn movement's only 2%. In the afternoons, similar, just reversed. You're looking at a little over 1,400 vehicles in that peak hour period with the majority of those vehicles heading north on Hopewell, a return trip that we would expect. You've got 25% that want to make that right from Bethany Bend, which becomes our critical queue in the afternoon movement. And then that 2% left turn movement is what really has some operational impact on that particular approach, just because of their inability to then make a left-hand turn. So one of the other things that we try and look at with this is the accident history at the particular location. So from 2010 to 2012, we had a total of 16 accidents. And then, of the alternatives, which alternatives would be better at solving certain types of accidents? And so we try to go through the accident history of the 16 accidents to see what caused the accident and which of the improvements may be better at solving them. And so in this particular slide, what we were looking at, those alternatives are saying, of the 16 accidents, approximately 31% would have been preventable with just the turn lanes, 44% with the turn lanes plus the signals, 50% with the single roundabout, and 75% with the dual roundabout. So you've still got some accidents out there that occur that regardless of the intersection improvement that we have in place, they're still gonna happen, whether that's striking an object, or running off the road, or rear-end collisions. They're still gonna happen regardless of what alternative is selected. I think what this shows is, though, that the roundabouts tend to be a little bit better in correcting a lot of the accidents that we see at those intersections, but don't particularly eliminate them. And then again, we look at the alternatives. When we're looking at what we're trying to solve, we have delays, we have the offset intersection. You know, what can we do to the offset intersection to make it act more like a single intersection? Aside from straightening the road completely, which was one of the alternatives we looked at early on, but because of the impacts of that, just, we didn't deem that to be a really viable alternative to move forward in the process. Now, which of these best mimicked a single intersection? And you could probably make an argument for and against both the dual roundabouts and the single roundabouts having that effect. But I think probably the dual roundabouts come closest to creating that type of situation. And then separating the turns, they all have a tendency to do that. That has a big operational impact on the intersection. Those things that have opportunity to affect overall speeds on Hopewell. And then access to Bethany Oaks. So those were some of the key criteria that we're looking at when we're evaluating the various alternatives that we have. Benefit-to-cost ratio is another one that we started looking at. So when we look at these, the turn lanes, from a construction standpoint, the estimate was about $940,000. We bumped that up to a little over $1.3 million with the addition of the traffic signals, $1.1 million for the single roundabout, and $1.7 million for the dual roundabout. Then another key component is that is, you know, right-of-way. All of those have various, varying impacts on the properties surrounding the project area. And so estimated right-of-way costs range anywhere from $180,000 for the turn lanes and signals, up to almost $1 million with the dual, dual roundabout option. Operational costs, 20-year operational costs, probably the most with the traffic signals. Estimated about $200,000 over the 20-year period. Roundabouts are relatively low in operational costs and generally just standard maintenance and landscape upkeep. So for a total project cost, we're looking anywhere from $1.15 million for the basic turn lanes, up to $2.7 million for the dual roundabout. Benefits, we generally are looking at delays, time savings, fuel savings, those types of things. And so the overall benefit-cost ratio, the highest one, was the single roundabout. So then we start looking at levels of service, and we generally try and do this out at 2035. And so with this overall program, we are looking at trying to move these projects forward with an eye on the future and making sure that what we do now has some impact on future traffic counts. Generally, what we have done is anywhere from 1.5% to 2% increase in traffic each year. So where we were at about 15,000 vehicles per day in the design year, we're looking probably over 20,000 vehicles per day from an operational standpoint. You can see the turn lanes at the various intersections in the future operate relatively inefficiently. Level of service F for almost all of those. The signal, at least one signal would warrant at Bethany Bend and Hopewell in the future with the potential of adding a second signal at Bethany Way to just kind of improve efficiency through the whole corridor there. But even that, you can see, operates, does not provide very good access to Bethany Oaks subdivision and has some other operational problems. And again, long-term maintenance cost on the signals is certainly one thing that we would consider. Now, the roundabout, the single roundabout also has some legs that operate as an F, as a very low F. And while I realize that's what the numbers say, I think intrinsically, when we look at it, those movements would be improved, such that I think it's relatively difficult to model, but I would hope that the operational improvements would be a little bit better than that F indicates. And then the dual roundabouts kind of takes those movements at both Bethany Bend and Bethany Way away with the dual roundabouts. And so we get a very efficient operation at those two intersections and probably from an operational standpoint, works, works the best. And so then we start looking at the comparison of all the options. They all are kind of comparable in capacity. And will operate to some degree, if you looked at the signal versus just the turn lanes, efficiently in the, in the design year. The turn lanes and the turn, traffic signals, both are probably a quicker construction period, a little bit less construction than the roundabouts, less impact than the roundabouts, and also gives us an opportunity to implement those over time. And so when you looked at the overall cost of probably $1.7 million, I think, on the intersection signal costs, you would have the turn lane construction first, and then down the road, as those warranted, those traffic signals would be installed. So that $1.7 million would really be over a period of time. Looking at probably $1.1 million for just the turn lanes initially, and then the rest of that coming as it warranted. Roundabouts, on the other hand, have a lower life cycle cost, relatively low maintenance. They're, they operate at, in all-weather conditions. They're generally safer. Accidents that generally occur in the intersections are usually lower-speed type accidents, fewer injuries. Intersections are probably the single most dangerous place that we have to drive with left turns in those intersections being the single most dangerous maneuver. Those are eliminated with the roundabout. It kind of fits into the overall feel of Milton, I think. It allows us to do some traffic calming measures on roads that we wouldn't ordinarily be able to do, some of the traditional traffic calming that we see in residential subdivisions, and has an overall reduction in motorist delay. And then I'll let Sarah kind of walk through what we've done with the public input and give you an idea about where we are and some of the comments that she'll be seeing.
So we've received a very good response to our online survey. I think in the first week, we had over 100 responses. And we've gotten the word out good about getting responses to that survey. Had over 40 people attend our public information meeting on the 17th and sent out letters just recently to all the potentially affected owners to come to the meeting tonight.
Just to be clear, those survey responses were from Milton citizens, correct?
Yes, yes. So the first question was just generally if the intersection should be improved. We did receive some other suggestions on this question, which included some other, other intersections in the city, which actually all of them are either in design or in construction. So that's good that we're moving forward with those. But a majority of the responses were for, yes, that the intersection should be improved. Then we've got a good range of responses on the question of which alternative. And this was just by presenting just the exhibits as part of the survey. It didn't have any, any additional background information that we've provided tonight, so. And the other responses, other suggestions on, on this question, we heard possibly phasing the solution with turn lanes and then a signal, and then aligning as to create one intersection. Got suggestions for always stop, even using a traffic cop during peak hours. And about half of the respondents provided a address. And so we mapped where those responses had come from. You can see the project location and the concentration of responses around the project area was very high.
So under our, under our normal process, if we were to move forward as we have with our other intersection process, you can see we're finishing up the concept. We would then move into final design. Take about six months in final design. Right-of-way can be anywhere from six months to a year or more. And then construction, just depending on the various alternative, 12 to 18 months on that. So just to kind of give you an idea about if this were to move forward as we normally do, that's kind of a timeline about how it would move forward. So with that, any questions, comments? We'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council? Bill?
Carter, you and I have talked about this offline a couple of times. And realize this is probably one of the most difficult situations we could run into with what Bob Allgood would say a junk-type situation here in intersections. You've given us a lot of information here, one of them being a number of accidents. I think you stated there were 16 accidents over the course of, what, the last?
Last three years.
Three years.
Yes, sir.
How many of those accidents were with injuries?
We had four injury accidents. There've been two fatalities within the vicinity of the intersection, but not necessarily associated with the intersection.
In your comparisons with land costs or land purchases out here, how much actual land, additional land or right-of-way is going to require for each one of these alternatives or options?
Do we break that down in the concept? Looks like it ranges from about 3/4 of an acre to an acre and a half. 3/4 of an acre being the turn lanes and signalization option. And then in addition to that, there'd be easements.
Right, and how much land involved with the single roundabout and the double roundabout?
Is that my single? About 3/4 of an acre with the single roundabout and acre and a quarter, acre and a half with the dual roundabout. Plus, plus easements. I think the issue with that is, especially with the dual roundabout, you start to have a bigger impact on the properties. And you have the direct impact on the property, plus the potential for complete takings on a couple of different properties. So with the dual roundabout, the properties with the red dot are the, either historic or more significantly impacted properties. And with the single lane roundabout, we have, we have one. And then with the turn lanes, there aren't, there aren't any that would necessarily be complete takings.
Okay, the, the single roundabout and red dot, is that an historic property? Is that what you're calling out?
Is that qualify? The cemetery was identified, that's the red.
Is that the cemetery?
The cemetery and the back property, but we're not getting into the cemetery itself.
Someone brought it up at the information meeting back in July. There's a parcel that's been for sale just to the east of the tennis courts. Been up for sale for quite some time. Have you considered that as a possible alternative for access and egress to Bethany Oaks?
We looked at that early on, and so if I, if I understand you correctly, we would take Bethany Oaks Point kind of out of this picture, out of the center of these two intersections, and we would bring it to the south on the other side of the tennis courts and tie into Bethany Bend.
Right.
We did have some discussions of that early on, and that can certainly be revisited. I think at the time, we just felt like the impacts to the property and potentially to Bethany Oaks would be too great. And so we didn't move forward with that, but we have had some discussion of that in the past.
And, well, you said you haven't carried that any further. I'd be interested to know what impact it would have on this study with those two offset intersections like that. It would certainly eliminate the Bethany Oaks issue from that segment of Hopewell Road.
Did y'all even look at that? We never even brought that to you, did we?
We did not look at specifically, take relocated intersection. I believe if we were to do that, we would be shifting the problem to a different location, so to speak, of Bethany Oaks Point aligning with Bethany Bend.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we may have had some concerns with, too, was the ability to get far enough away from the intersection to account for turn lanes and turn movements into and out of the neighborhood. But as we move forward, we can revisit that. We can, we can take another look at that.
Well, you know, I understand the distance from that possible ingress-egress there to Hopewell Road as being an issue. But I'd be interested in the amount of traffic coming out of Bethany Oaks to where you could minimize at least the impact between Bethany Way and Bethany Bend there.
Well, of the overall traffic that we see in the intersection, it's about 2%.
Yeah, but is it the 2% that does 80% of the waiting?
They, yeah, they operated at a level of service F, yeah.
I'm thinking, you know, possibly with the turn lanes on Bethany Way and Bethany Bend, then rerouting Bethany Point's traffic over onto Bethany, Bethany Bend. I'd be interested to know how that all works out.
Okay. We can certainly revisit that issue.
Yeah?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Obviously, you know, I'm kind of looking at the difference between the single roundabout and the double roundabout. You know, because over a 20-year time horizon, we're trying to make decisions far into the future. I guess my question is, if we were to do a single roundabout, would, would it be safe to say that a future council, because the traffic council might have to just redo it anyway 10 years from now? I'm just trying to think, you know, if that, if it would warrant, if those Fs that you're predicting 20 years from now in the future might warrant additional construction at some point in the future anyway? And just kind of making sure that, would that be the case?
Well, it's possible, and Nathan may be able to answer that. It's possible that you could make some modifications to the roundabout to, to improve those, those movements.
Sure.
I, I think the elimination of that left turn. I, I think the elimination of that left turn will have some positive impacts on the operation of that. That, especially the movement from Bethany Bend then moves from a stop control to a yield control. I mean, realistically, it probably operates more as a yield control now during, during peak hours than a stop. But hopefully that, that movement, the slowing down of traffic coming into- Into the roundabout to create some additional gaps to move that traffic through. And I think what we see too is that the overall operation of the roundabouts tends to improve over the years as people get used to them and they just, they just become a little bit more efficient.
Yes, my, another concern I have with the single roundabout, and I don't know enough about traffic patterns, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of room for a merge into a left turn if people are trying to, in the morning, for example, go north on Bethany Way when people are coming south on Hopewell and then trying to make a left, going around that. It just seems like there's not a whole lot of space there for that. And people are coming south of Hopewell. I just didn't know if that would, you know, would that work over time if traffic patterns got, got greater? And I don't know the answer to that.
Right, it's definitely tight. And I mean, you know, we're limited in some of the storage capacities and things that we can do just given the existing conditions. We have tried to move Bethany Way, straighten that connection a little bit to give us a little bit more storage on the north end of the project. But, but I think the way it looks right now is particularly, particularly, sorry, if you look at the simulations, it, it does tend to operate and it does provide that storage to make that left-hand turn.
And that might help seeing those simulations. At some point, maybe you can do that offline or something like that.
Yeah, all of the information on the project, including the simulations, and I should have put this in, is available on our project website, Just for the sake of time, we didn't load the simulations tonight, but they're certainly available.
Another question on the double roundabout, obviously, you know, cost is a factor that we're thinking about between the difference, which is pretty significant. You know, I think the construction of something like this, we, you mentioned that construction would take place over the course of one year. Would it be possible to do this one in phases? You know, if longer term, it just made more sense that it wouldn't require additional construction? I just haven't thought about that, but until now.
Build one at a time?
Yeah.
You guys want to weigh in on that one? That, that's a good question. I, I honestly don't know. I think we'd have to look at the phasing a little bit. To some degree, it may go that way anyway, just from a construction sequencing standpoint. We're just not that far along in the process. I don't think you would want to fund one and then fund another one.
Right.
I think you'd want to let it as one single project.
Okay. That's it?
Anybody else have any questions? Carter, Sarah, Bill?
Going back to your land acquisition costs there, with the turn lane option in the single roundabout, both with the same amount of land required, what were the, what were the cost factors on each one of those options?
So from a right-of-way acquisition standpoint?
Yes, sir.
So both, both the turn lanes and the signal essentially are the same thing because you're doing the same project, just adding signals, one or two, depending on when they warrant. So that was roughly fifteen parcels that we were looking at potential impact on. Total right-of-way cost was $180,000. Moving up to the single and double, the single roundabout was looking at nineteen parcels for $240,000. And the dual was also nineteen parcels, but because it was more significant impacts on those, you start looking at damages and potential total takes on those. So it moves it from $242 to $1 million worth of right-of-way acquisition.
Joe?
Will?
You all have had a lot more time to think about this than I have. I've sat here and designed this thing for you. But can you go back to the single roundabout?
Yes, sir.
A second. If you look at the, you said talk something about realigning Bethany Way and even Bethany Bend. You know, the two, double roundabout basically is twice the cost when you look at land acquisition and construction costs and everything as the single. If you look at the possibility of Bethany Way was actually aligned towards the center of the one roundabout, that you got that corner parcel there. I'm not sure who owns that corner parcel. It's the older house on, I guess north is up here, you know, on the north would be the southwest, southeast corner of Bethany Way and Hopewell. If you went through that parcel and possibly even, again, Bethany, it's Bethany Oaks, right? The subdivision?
That's correct.
Yeah. And if you actually did something to affect the rec parcel and actually brought those pieces together to a single roundabout, you know, kind of a, I mean, I realize you'd have a lot more land acquisition costs and you might end up by the time you do the additional land acquisition, relocate a rec parcel, that type of thing, you may end up with the exact same cost. But you'd have a single roundabout instead of having two roundabouts in close proximity with one another, which does seem to look a bit, it's different. I've never seen two roundabouts that close together, although I haven't been everywhere. But-
I've seen them closer.
Yeah.
I thi, I think you're right. I think your acquisition costs go up and you start looking at, again, total takes and, and relocations on some of those properties. The skew on the approaches from Bethany Bend and Bethany Way probably start to have some operational impacts, particularly when you bring Bethany Bend over. You would probably have to increase the size of the roundabout significantly in order to get some separation between Hopewell and Bethany Oaks. You know, maybe that's the time you look at relocation of Bethany Oaks down to Bethany Bend.
Yeah.
But, you know-
But I, I agree with the engineer over there or planner that, you know, you're kind of, would be displacing one problem from one place to another because of the proximity with the intersection. You know, the traffic kind of backing up and they still have a difficult way. Plus, it kind of affects their, what's their established entry to their subdivision too, whether, how, how that would affect the overall subdivision. Again, it's a, it's a very challenging design problem, any way you look at it. The signalized concept, I guess that was, would be synchronized signals?
If, if two are installed, yes.
Yeah. But they would only be at the Bethany Bend and Bethany Way intersection. They wouldn't be-
That's right. Probably more likely to begin at Bethany Bend than Bethany Way and only do the Bethany Way just to improve the overall operations of the project area. I don't know that Bethany Way in and of itself would warrant a signal.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, anyway, you look at it, it's, it's a real challenge.
Yes, it is.
Anybody else? Any questions for staff, consultants, comments?
I'd like to hear what the citizens say.
Yeah.
I'll do that, I just wanted to- All right, if there's no more questions, then we can move to public comment.
Our first public comment comes from Pamela Jackson.
Hello. First thing I want to say is I have the-
If you could state your address for the record, please?
Two one zero five Bethany Way, twenty ninety-five Bethany Way, and then thirteen four six oh. Well, I've got, I've got three different addresses.
Just, just-
Twenty one oh five.
Yeah.
My point here is I've, I've got the first three driveways on Bethany Way on your left-hand side if you were going toward Hopewell. And I've got three driveways on, I'm sorry, toward Haygood. How's that? First three drives on the left going toward Haygood. And then I've got three driveways on Hopewell, one of which is not even taken into account in here. I am the, and this is a fairly old map because my property's not represented properly. But when you come down Bethany Bend to Hopewell, I've got a driveway that goes straight across there. And not in any of these models is my driveway taken into consideration. The other thing being that since I am right there on that corner, I see what happens. I've been there over twenty years now, and I know what happens. And the problem is not as significant as it is being made out to be. And I kind of operate under the philosophy, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But there is a small problem. And the problem in the morning is from seven to seven thirty a.m., and it is only at Bethany Way and Hopewell. And that's from seven thirty, seven to seven thirty a.m. in the morning. It's the reverse in the afternoon. There is no problem on Bethany Way in the afternoon. The problem is from five to five thirty, coming from Bethany Bend to Hopewell. Those are your only troubled times. And I just sat here and calculated it out. One of my suggestions is, is why not put a traffic cop out there those particular times of the day in the morning at Bethany Way and in the evening at Bethany Bend, and your problem solved tomorrow? Also, you know, we're looking at $3 million. That's a whole lot of money. We could put a cop out there for eight hours a day, pay him $100,000 a year, and we could do this for thirty years for the same amount of money that $3 million would bring in. So to me, that's, you know, makes sense. Or the other thing is, I mean, even, so what I want to say is, to me, at best, it may need stop signs put in there, three-way stops at both places at best. To me, a traffic cop is going to be the best solution. Fulton County Schools can do it. Kingsbridge Christian School puts them out there. This would solve the problem right away. Let me see what else I've got here. Oh, the other thing that this does not take into account, any of these studies, you know, one of the good things about Milton is we are a small-town community still. And most of us know each other, and I know most of you probably go past there. It doesn't take into effect the courtesy factor. Every, people stop and let people go in and turn and all that. And the little things that go across the road that you count cars with can't count the courtesy factor that goes in. So, and the other really, really big thing, one other big thing I want to mention, particularly about the roundabouts, which to me is just so important, and I hope you'll take it into great consideration. We have three high schools right there that we're looking at. We've got Kingsbridge Christian School with a high school. We've got Cambridge High School, and we've got St. Francis High School. Having all those high schools there means a high number of the drivers there are sixteen-year-old kids. And those roundabouts are hard to maneuver. And if you put those roundabouts out there, you're going to increase the accidents and God forbid the fatalities out there because it's going to be those, you know, a high majority of sixteen-year-old brand-new drivers driving that. And that's too difficult for a lot of us adults to even handle. But to try to put that into a brand-new driver, that's frightening. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dale Jackson.
I'm Dale Jackson, twenty one oh five Bethany Way, Milton, and several other driveways and addresses on Hopewell. I agree with what my wife just stated on, on many of the reasons that she stated, especially the sixteen-year-olds. For the parent now of a seventeen-year-old, we just finished the first year of driving with her. And that was one of the, one of the issues we always had was whether she would understand the traffic situations that she came into. The driving with mom and dad never always covered everything that she was going to be given in her first year. And I think, I'm not even sure, it's not that slide, but it's a single roundabout slide. If you could get that back up there. The single roundabout slide, that looks to be the most confusing thing I've ever seen in my entire life. I mean, it's scary even to me, and I've been driving for, oh, I guess forty years, that's about it. What I'd like to do is, is just say that as far as the budget for the city's concerned, I, I see this as at least a $3 million investment, not to mention the time and delays that it's going to cause while it's being constructed. I would, as a citizen of Milton, like to see the money used elsewhere. I know we don't have a city hall yet. I'd like to see if we're talking about improvements. I don't, I'm sure there's a separate budget item for that, but I would like to see the $3 million put into something like that rather than something like this. My other thought process is that Highway Nine is supposed to be the thoroughfare. It's supposed to be widened at least one day. It's supposed to be widened to four lanes. What we're doing here with many of the cars that go through here, they're taking a shortcut. Rather than go on Highway Nine, rather than going north on Hopewell to Highway Nine, they're coming south on Hopewell, cutting through Bethany Bend over to Highway Nine. So they're cutting out a whole bit of traffic, which if we make this fix, then the DOT comes in, fixes Highway Nine, and then we're left with a roundabout that's hardly being used at all, especially as my wife stayed for only thirty minutes in the morning and thirty minutes in the afternoon. I guess I, I prefer that we take a stepwise look at this, that we start with the traffic policeman at the intersection, that if that doesn't seem to work, we go to stoplights, and then finally, we go to a roundabout. Having personally driven roundabouts in, in other countries where they put them closer together, I find roundabouts really annoying, especially small roundabouts like this. I don't see this as being a workable solution. And certainly, being a homeowner right there, I don't want a large roundabout. A, a small roundabout's basically going to clog traffic, in my opinion. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Hudy.
Our next speaker is Sally Schubert-Cavalier.
My name's Sally Schubert-Cavalier. I'm at one three eight five oh Hopewell Road. I am historical property on the northwest corner of Hopewell and Bethany Way. We have a back driveway on Bethany Way as well. Bought the property in 1989, so we have been there quite a long time and seen the influx of traffic where we used to ride horses and ride bikes. Now we can barely go out of our driveway without worrying about getting hit by cars. But the problem, basically, there's several problems we are very aware of. I've seen the morning traffic where people are very courteous when they're turning right on Hopewell from Bethany Way. The traffic coming down Hopewell, people will let one person go, then one person goes. They let people come through to take that right turn, and it's worked very well. In the afternoons, people are trying to turn left on, right on Bethany, from Bethany Bend to Hopewell, and the traffic backs up on Bethany Bend. That is a problem for people coming home. I do not see, I see the double roundabouts as a total waste of time and money. I think that's pretty much ridiculous. And I can't even picture that in that whole area. I just don't think it even requires it. The biggest problem I've seen all these years is the speed coming down Hopewell, southbound and northbound on Hopewell past our road is pretty bad. And I think there should be something looked at where they can reduce the speed on Hopewell because people fly up and down that road. And that's the reason that we built a back driveway on Bethany Way when I bought the property. I even had my daughter get on the bus on Bethany Way instead of Hopewell Road, but that's my official address because the traffic is just going too fast. So I think there needs to be a way of slowing down the traffic on Hopewell in that area. We have asked the city of Milton to have policemen sit in our driveway or put maybe some of the signals where it shows your speed. I suggested that at the meeting, which they've said is kind of a waste of time after maybe a month or two, people ignore that. I tend to look at them when they've been placed in certain areas, and if it shows my speed is ten miles above the speed limit, it, it affects me. I think, well, I need to slow down because I know that's coming up. I just think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at before you decide to go to this extreme measure. And my property would be very much affected by right-of-ways with turn lanes. I want to see the traffic improved. I want to see the accidents reduced. But I do think, like, with maybe traffic officers to be out there directing traffic from Bethany Bend onto Hopewell is probably the first thing that needs to be looked at. I think the Bethany Way merge onto Hopewell in the morning is doing real well as it is, and I don't see that as much of an issue. So I just not sure about a roundabout. I just don't think that's something that needs to be done at this time. But we see it every morning, and we know what's going on. The influx of people from Cherokee County cutting over to Winward and Highway Nine, that's what's been happening. that's what's been happening. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have 21 seconds left for this item. Can we extend? We've got two more.
Yeah, I'd be glad. I'm sure the council will be okay to give everybody a chance to speak.
Our next speaker is Jeff Runner.
My name's Jeff Runner. I live at 13895 Hopewell Road, 13805, and there's one without an address. So I've got four driveways off of Hopewell Road. My parcel is the only parcel, I believe, that's affected. It's a red dotted parcel in all of the options. And if the double circle for the million-dollar land acquisition, I think we could probably work something out. But I want to say, I've been around traffic circles. I don't like them. I live in Dawson County right now, or I have property in Dawson County. If you want to see how a traffic circle doesn't work, go up to Dawsonville where they have 15 cars that come through at rush hour, and they can't get through there. There's accidents, there's, you know, and it's, like the Jackson said, you know, it's young kids. It's also the people over 60. And I can tell you, there's several people that actually work here for the city who've had accidents on that traffic circle up there. They are not affecting. Computer simulations, I've gone online. The simulation looks very good. I grew up doing computer simulations through my college years in my first years working. They're only as good as the data that you put in. And the data that's been put in this does not represent what's happening in our circle. And I won't go into details. I think the Jacksons did a great job of telling you that. It's only a couple, few minutes in the morning, a few minutes in the evening. And it's just not the problem that we're seeing here, that we're trying to fix. We're not fixing anything by doing this. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
And our final speaker is Mr. Mark Godwin.
Good evening, Mark Godwin, 2695 Bethany Creek Court, Bethany Oaks, resident HOA president. Our primary concern as the HOA for Bethany Oaks is the safety. And our consideration is especially the northbound traffic coming up of Hopewell and the left-hand turn that you have to make there. That's been, I think, a principal cause of many of the accidents, especially because of the downward grade in that area, and you can't see to make the left. So while I think that that is the significant concern, and while we only represent 2% of the traffic problem there, certainly our families count for safety, and we're concerned for everyone else as well. Two points I would like to raise, and I don't want to argue with anybody back here. I will give credit to the courtesy factor. The studies do take into effect the amount of wait time. And certainly, one of the biggest issues there, one of the biggest positive impacts is the courtesy of those folks that are coming southbound on Hopewell when we're trying to get out and make our left. The primary reason for that is they're already stopped. And once they're already stopped, it's very easy for them to let us out. If we change the ingress, egress over to Bethany Way, that stop goes away, and we suddenly have a much longer wait trying to make that left-hand turn to get out and go to work in the morning. So primary concern there. And the other one that I've got is principally, we believe that the actual dual roundabout is a safe and effective way to go about this. Don't have any concerns about driving through roundabouts. Been doing it for a long time. And I know that it tends to be progressive in nature. A lot of people have a hard time getting used to it in the beginning, but I think it's the wave of the traffic designs in the future. And certainly, it's been in place in Europe for a very long time. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the public comment?
Yes, sir, that is.
Okay, anybody closing questions or anything?
I do have one question. Carter, what of those accidents that happened, what time of day were they happening? Was it during peak hours? Was it not? I mean, obviously, peak hours, everybody would slow down.
Probably the rear ends were probably more peak hour related, but I think the accidents occurred at all hours of the day.
Karen?
We've heard several people mention putting a police out there. Would you put a police on a 45 mile-per-hour road in traffic type time? Is that a safety issue for our police officers?
I don't know that it's a safety issue. I don't know that it's a safety issue, but it's just not functional. You know, you stick a human in the interaction of a traffic control device, and I've never seen that. It sounds on paper like it should work, like you should be able to be out there and start directing traffic around stop signs and traffic lights. The reality is that the traffic control devices are engineered and provide a much better fix than all of a sudden having this control device and now interjecting a human into it. You know, if we were having problems where all of a sudden an intersection was getting clogged up, for example, if you head down south on 400 and get off Atlantic Road in the middle of Buckhead in rush hour, you know, traffic gridlocks because people fill the intersection and don't allow for there to be a gap for other cars to turn. Maybe in that degree, when traffic is all but stopped, you can keep some separation. I've seen traffic control in the form of a police officer work. But if there's traffic control devices in place, it sounds good. But the reality is it just, especially over a period of time, doesn't typically work very, very well functionally.
Well, it's obvious from looking at the results of the survey, the comments, those that travel just north and south on Hopewell Road who don't want any kind of traffic lights or roundabouts whatsoever to slow them down, and those that have to go east and west and have to actually cross over and sit in the traffic have very different opinions as to how it should be fixed. Is it possible to put a roundabout at one intersection and turn lanes at another? Is that something that was looked at? And how would that affect the people at Bethany Oaks drive?
We didn't necessarily break it out like that. I think just off the top of my head, you would probably have some operational issues. And the roundabout would probably be Bethany Bend and Hopewell.
Is that the one that has the worst traffic currently?
Yeah, I mean, you're still going to have some issues in the future with movements off of Bethany Way. And I don't know that that would improve and may make things worse for access to Bethany Oaks. It's not something that we looked at specifically, though.
What about, I think, I know it was mentioned by the public, but any type of functional traffic calming on Hopewell for the north and south? You know, I think we know that changing the speed limit probably wouldn't help anything, but anything that can, you know, physically be done to help slow any of that traffic, to help the situation?
Well, most of our traditional traffic calming measures that you would see in a residential neighborhood really wouldn't apply on this type of road and the speeds that we see out on Hopewell Road. So speed humps and those types of things really are out of the question. And the roundabout really becomes the most viable one to control speed because you can look at both approach speeds, slowing those down as they come into the area, as well as the roundabout itself tends to control those speeds to some degree, at least in the vicinity of the project. As an overall system-wide approach, I think, you know, the roundabouts are one of those things that we're looking at on these types of roads to try and help control the speeds. And as they grow and as the number of them grow at various intersections, you have more of a system-wide approach to doing that as opposed to just isolated roundabouts or isolated control measures. There was some mention about the radar signs. We do have a couple of extra radar signs that we have in stock, and those are going into a program where they will be placed at certain locations for four to six months. I think what we've seen is particularly people who use those corridors quite frequently, the signs initially are very effective, but over a period of time, they kind of blend into the background and they become less effective. And so with those signs, they'll be in a rotation where they're put up for four to six months and then moved to another location and then brought back at some point to try and maintain their effectiveness when they do go out. So that is one of the things that we are looking at in this particular area.
Thanks.
Joe?
So we had a benefit-to-cost slide in here somewhere? I was trying to remember what the figure of merit was for the benefit. Was the percentage of benefit achieved? Or was it, how are you measuring that? Because I would agree that, oh, it's a ratio.
The benefit-to-cost ratio.
Yeah, because, you know, a couple of the comments that our citizens made sort of struck me as being very true. And that is, you know, the cost of that dual roundabout situation. It's, that's one of the bigger projects we would have done as a city.
That's right.
And it doesn't even yield, you know, that much of a, well, it yields no benefit, really, going that extra extent except for the classification of the traffic patterns that you showed on the earlier slide. So, yeah, this is one of the simple, obvious, you know, issues. So, okay, thank you.
Just a question, you know, going there, is that from a staff perspective and consultants, is this, you know, something that has to be done? I mean, obviously, it doesn't have to be done. Nothing has to be done if it has, you know, a traffic problem. But, you know, in your opinion, is this, because we certainly welcome all the public input and, you know, and will continue to. And obviously, we've got lots of intersections we need to spend money on, so.
Well, that's right.
Where do you rank this?
You know, that's a really good question. And I think it's one of those things that we just have to look at from a community standpoint. You know, are the delays worth, worth it? You know, from a safety standpoint, you know, 16 accidents over a three-year period. While we want to minimize those, ranked relatively low with some of the other intersections that we're working on. Again, you have to look at the volume of vehicles that go through the intersection. So just straight numbers don't necessarily always tell the story on the accident issue. But I think we also want to look at, you know, from a long-term benefit. We're a relatively young city, and we have an opportunity to make some impact on these intersections now that we may not have an opportunity to in the future as we begin to grow and our facilities begin to grow and our needs begin to grow from a capital investment standpoint. And so it's just one of those things where we have to weigh the safety, the delay, the costs of the project, both near-term and long-term. When this is actually needed, five, 10, 15 years down the road, will we have the money to do it at that point? Or is it better to be proactive and look at these intersections now when we have an opportunity and the demands on our capital funds aren't as great as they probably will be in the future? So, you know, is it necessary today? Maybe not. Will it become more necessary in the future? I think it will. Will traffic grow more than our projections? Maybe. You know, will it be necessary in five years as opposed to 10 years? You know, that's some of the things we just have to weigh. So from a delay standpoint and from a safety standpoint, it's not necessarily the worst intersection in the city. But it's certainly one that was identified in the transportation plan as one that we should look at and evaluate and consider improvements while we have an opportunity to do so.
Yeah?
I'm reading over some of the notes here from the survey as well. And a lot of people talk about transitional phasing. You know, obviously, not going all in, but taking steps with turn lanes first, see how that works. Obviously, we have some citizens that mentioned that as well. As you gave me on, if that's even possible.
Well, certainly possible when you're looking at the turn lanes and the traffic signal. At this particular time, the traffic signal wouldn't even warrant. And so that's one of the options that, when you looked at the long-term cost of the traffic signal and turn lanes at 1.72 million, that's not an initial cost. In other words, that would be phased in over some period of time. So the initial construction project would be the installation of the turn lanes. And then as the two intersections at Bethany Bend and Bethany Way warrant, the signals would be installed at that time. So you're looking at, just for the turn lanes, though, you're looking at $1.1 million. So in that particular case, yes, the signals and turn lanes could be a phased approach, not so much with the roundabouts.
Yeah.
Bill? I have a couple of points. One that Mr. Godwin brought up, I've recognized, is the site distance southbound on Hopewell from Bethany, from Bethany Bend. And to make a eastbound or a left turn from Hopewell onto Bethany Bend, pretty dark down through that cavern on the southbound side of Hopewell. And I see that as a big safety issue there. What even, and I see a lot of fast-moving traffic coming northbound, especially in the evening there. And that's what hampers making a left turn from Bethany Way to, or Bethany Bend and southbound Hopewell. What has the engineer taken into consideration there in redoing this intersection to minimize or to maximize the site distance southbound on Hopewell?
Well, certainly, the turn lanes don't provide you really any relief from speed issues unless you happen to catch a red light. And in some cases, has the potential to increase speed through there. The roundabout, obviously, either the single roundabout or the double roundabout has the effect of essentially slowing that traffic down and improving at least your reaction time coming out because of the slower speeds along that road. With any of those, the ability to widen and open that corridor up improves that site, site distance down through there. Addition of lighting could be another component down through that corridor to improve some of the site visibility. But I think it's more just the additional of turn lanes or the roundabout that really kind of opens up that site visibility down through that corridor.
In your traffic counts, aside from taking actual traffic counts, have we done a physical or visual survey of where these vehicles are coming from? I would suspect that they're coming through from Cherokee and from Forsyth County. So we would be, I guess, and anything we're doing there is accommodating cross-county traffic and hopefully minimizing delays to, you know, city traffic there. And I guess to Mr. Jackson's point there, too, since Highway 9 hopefully is going to be widened here in the next few years, would you anticipate that a better route over to Highway 9 and putting the traffic there might alleviate some of the traffic down Hopewell?
It could.
Or is that too far out to anticipate?
You know, traffic's an interesting thing. It'll tend to find the path of least resistance like most things do. The answer to the first part of the question is, do we know where the vehicles are coming from? No, we don't. But that's true of any project we do. Unless we can close the borders in some way, every project we do, we have to deal with traffic from wherever its origination point is. Whether or not the Highway 9 widening will have any effect, it could. Currently, that, I think, is scheduled for construction to begin probably around 2020, 2021. Concept and environmental has begun on that particular project. But I don't know that that has a whole lot of effect. I mean, most of these vehicles coming southbound or east-west in the morning, depending on which way they go, I don't know that they would originate on that side of town. So the Highway 9 corridor goes up, you know, parallels 400. I don't know that this is a viable route for that. The CTP contemplated trying to push vehicles over that direction, coming down Hopewell, the north end of Hopewell, and taking them over Hamby. I think what we have seen a little bit more of this year is maybe a little bit more east-west connectivity that we didn't really discuss in the CTP with the development of the two high schools. And we may, we may begin to see more of that. And we may begin to see more of that. I just, I don't know that we want to bet on GDOT's project to have full impact on this or alleviate this problem completely, and whether or not they maintain that schedule. So, that is, but that is a project that they're working on.
What other projects are on the priority list that fall below this intersection here?
Well, from the CTP, as we work our way kind of through that list, get back up to So, the other projects that we would be looking at that were identified as key projects would be Freemanville-Providence, Freemanville-Birmingham, Bethany-Providence, State Route 140 in Rancheck would probably be one that's on GDOT's radar as they look through the possibilities of widening or operational improvements on 140. That's probably one we would be best left to them. And then Crab Apple, the northeast bypass connector road that we've talked about, which is essentially the Charlotte extension down in the Crab Apple, were ones that were identified in the CTP as being the key intersection projects that we should be looking at.
So, most of the, those on the list there are on the west side of the city?
That is correct.
Freemanville, Birmingham, the north side.
The ones on the east side have been some of the ones that we have currently in process, State Route Nine of Bethany, Hopewell-Franceis-Cogburn, Cogburn-Bethany. Those are the ones that we currently have underway.
Right.
Bert?
Kind of to Bill's point a few minutes ago about other projects, what do we think the impact on this Bethany will be after the completion of the Hopewell-Franceis-Cogburn roundabout? I would tend to think that that would perhaps, as it's flowing a little bit better, it would take some of that evening drive going that way.
It could. You could have some people that try and avoid that northbound Cogburn leg and come around on the west side, the eastbound approach to that intersection that would have to come through here. So, you could relieve some of that pressure if the operations at that intersection improve like we expect them to. So, that is one that could have some direct impact on this particular project.
I have one more.
Lance in the car.
Okay. Could you do three-way stops at both those intersections?
Not and actually have the intersection work efficiently, I don't think. You'll end up with a situation like we have at Hopewell-Franceis-Cogburn that we're trying to alleviate right now.
Okay. Jim?
I think it will be interesting to see how the Hopewell-Franceis-Cogburn intersection affects this one and also affects people's view of roundabouts. And I think maybe once it is up and going and we can see how well that roundabout works and how if it does affect traffic flows, that might change what we want for here. And when do we expect that one to actually be completed within a year?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For being here. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your comments, those that are in the audience. Sid, if you want to call the next item.
Our next item is discussion of City of Milton budget, revenue and expenditures, capital improvement project prioritization. Miss Stacy Inglis.
I guess I'll start and then I'll tag team Miss Stacy if we need to do that tonight. So, what we've done is that we're going to try, and hopefully, it made it to you. If it didn't, we'll go back to the books. But we pushed the budget documents to you, to your iPads, earlier tonight, which is why I sent the email. I said, bring your iPad tonight. You should have gotten, when we pushed that to you, you should have gotten four documents. And we'll talk a little bit about, well, actually, you should have gotten five documents. And we'll talk about what each of those documents is here. And I'm going to walk you through kind of some budget highlights tonight. I don't expect, nor would I think that you would be prepared to react to the budget tonight, having just now had it pop up in your inbox. I can't imagine you had a chance to study it and say, I think I'd like to move this here and take that away from here and move that to here. But I want you to know there's plenty of opportunity to do that. This is the first of two work sessions that happened with the budget, as well as a host of public hearings that occurred. So, this is kind of just the rollout and maybe the summary night where, as we've done in prior years, we've kind of given you some of the highlights, see how you initially react to it. And then, it will obviously become more precise as we get closer towards adoption because there's still some unknown things out there, and I'll tell you what those are. And also, I want to start by saying this budget, we kind of built around the notion that we were really looking at a one-to-two-quarter budget. And what does that mean, one-to-two-quarter budget? That means within the second quarter of this fiscal year, I do seriously believe that we will have, I know, I've been believing this now for almost two years, that, but now we've got the court on our side, so I'm getting closer to an answer, that we will have some additional revenues impact the city that's going to cause us to go through this exercise again. So, rather than putting a bunch of work into a budget that we were making a bunch of guesses with, we kind of elected to put together a budget that, if it needed to, could serve us well for the entire fiscal year. But I really don't believe it's going to be a budget that serves us for the entire fiscal year. And I think we'll be here at the table talking about changes in priorities and hopefully some capital projects mid-budget year. Having said that, this budget anticipates revenues really flat over last year, 18 million eight, 28,400. You know, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick as we start to close fiscal year 13. We're seeing a little bit of an uptick in several of the different revenue lines, which means we budgeted conservatively. We're seeing some additional property tax revenue come in, some, oh, gosh, motor vehicle tax, intangible tax, and some different revenues. What we're seeing is anticipated revenues as we close out 13 that are coming in, about $681,000 more than anticipated. So, bring that up because I'm going to give you a number here in a second that's going to give you some idea as to how I think we're closing fiscal year 13 as we then move into fiscal year 14. So, anticipate revenues to be eight, or 681,000 more than expected in 2013, and expenditures to be less than expected at $760,000. What that means is that we will bring down a number somewhere about a million four to the bottom line as we close year fiscal 13, as was budgeted. So, we've got some of that money to return to a fund balance, which means we're closing fiscal year 13 strong. Saying that, we have taken, if you remember in fiscal 13, we elected to spend into the fund balance for a good reason, to draw it down some. And what, the practical reality of what's occurred is we will draw in, or we will spend into it about half of what we anticipated. As I bring this budget forward to you tonight, what we've done is we've taken that 1.4 million anticipated revenue over expense number and moved it over to this fiscal year 14 budget. So, bringing you a budget tonight that has $20 million, $20 million 208,000 worth of expenditures in it. But I'm also bringing you a budget that this year, unlike last year, does not ask you to move, dip into the fund balance at all, and it maintains it just north of $7 million. Have I lost anybody yet? Okay, finishing 13 strong and not asking us to spend into the fund balance for 14. That's the highlight there. We should know the answer to the lost situation in January, February. We really believe we're on track to know whatever that answer's going to be. So, my hope is that we can adopt a budget, but then be back here talking about how we could better utilize some of those revenues to complete a couple of projects that are well-needed in the City of Milton. What this budget does, kind of some of the high-level things, you all funded the severe weather warning sirens in Phase One last year. This budget entirely funds a Phase Two, which will be a Phase Two and implementation of severe weather warning sirens in all of Milton. So, that completely funds, if this budget adopts as it's presented. The North Fulton Radio Authority funding is on track. If this budget adopts as it's presented with funding in place to complete that project on time and under budget. We are mindful of the fact that we have vehicle replacement needs because those are capital assets in the city. This budget contemplates fully funding both vehicle replacement reserve where needed across all of our fleet, primarily in police and fire. So, when we need to replace fire trucks or police cars, we're able to do so with cash. Funds pavement management at a million nine, that's always one of those numbers we look at every year. We say, how much pavement are we going to do? We've got lots of roads out there. A million nine will get us paving projects comparable to the paving that was just awarded this year, that if it would stop raining, we might actually get done. And that's what's contemplated in this budget, in the capital project costs. One of the things we don't know at this point, one of the things that's still to be refined, is the cost of healthcare benefit for city employees. And that's one of those that always moves up until the very last minute. It starts typically with some type of an increase in it, and then it negotiates down. We're still in that negotiating down phase. What's represented in this budget is the largest number it could be. Okay, so the numbers only get better from what's presented in this budget. I wouldn't come back to you at any point and say that the numbers have gotten worse. I believe there was some interest in having gateway signage brought to Milton, and this budget contemplates that we would install four gateway signs as kind of an initial project to kick that program off. There is money appropriated in this budget that if you all decide to move forward with the land acquisition that we've talked about, that I won't say the location here because we've been talking about it in executive session, but if you elect to move forward with the land acquisition, it's funded in this budget, as well as funds to be able to continue to maintain the relationship with the City of Alpharetta for the Parks Without Boundaries program that we started last year. So, we would continue to move forward without non-resident fees in our parks. And there's the first phase of funding included in this budget for the Hopewell-Birmingham Road Intersection Project. We believe that with the available funding, plus the funding that we're adding this year, with hopefully anticipated funding next year to complete that project, that that one will remain on track to go to construction as some of these projects that we are now under construction with finish off.
Chris, I'm sorry, which project was that you just mentioned?
You didn't look at me when I said it, and I was wondering why. Hopewell-Birmingham.
Yeah, there you go. Yes, okay.
I looked up and I was looking down.
I'm writing.
He must have not heard that. Beyond that, it's a relatively similar deployment, I believe, as we are currently deploying with staff and resources. This budget does recognize a two-and-a-half percent cost-of-living adjustment for city employees. If that's something that interests you, that is in keeping with what we have done in prior years. It's not more than nor less than what has been done here recently. Let me stop at this point and say, do you have any questions? I've kind of highlighted some of the bigger things. You know, when we build the budget, we put together an M&amp;O budget, which is what keeps us afloat. We try to fund the capital projects that we need to maintain our assets and do a couple of different projects to complete things. This budget had some initiative requests that were asked for by different departments, and at this point, I've just elected to hold off on initiative requests. Initiative would be something new that we're doing. We've elected to hold off on those pending our discussions, hopefully, more towards the middle of the year. When I bring a budget that's at $20 million and $18 million worth of revenues, I don't really look at a lot of initiatives to fund beyond what we're doing to get us to that point.
Yeah, sidewalks, was that in the paving projects, the 1.9 million?
There's some sidewalk money in here. Carter has brought a plan that shows us what we need to be able to complete sidewalk.
Thanks. The sidewalk projects would contemplate using capital funds that are currently in the budget. And so, what we looked at, what we did this year is we went out and inventoried all of the sidewalk within the city. So, we've got roughly 70 miles worth of sidewalk. Unfortunately, not all of it's connected. And so, when we started looking at those projects this year, we tried to identify projects that we could use the existing funding that was available. So, we'll be going to construction this year with some of our MARTA projects, which would be connections on Webb Road from Highway Nine over to Cogburn and Cogburn over to Alpharetta. And then, at that point, those connections became very expensive, looking at some of the others. So, we've been looking for alternative funding sources for those. And what's contemplated in this budget is to make some of the connections here in the Deerfield area that don't currently exist. So, you've got some sections along Deerfield Parkway here coming up to the existing sideways on the west side of Deerfield from Webb. And you've got a missing section over on Morris Road that were relatively easy, big but good, thank you, sections to make. So, it allowed us to use existing money without encumbering additional capital money until we can start looking at some of the more expensive connections that are going to have to be made.
Jim?
Are those sections where a developer would normally have to put the sidewalk in if that property was being developed?
Yes, they are.
And it just has not been developed as of yet to the sidewalk?
That's correct.
Is there a way for us to put them in now and at the time the project is developed to get the money back from the developer that they would have had to expend in putting those in?
Not the way the ordinance is currently written. The way it's currently written, they would make an inspection of the sidewalk that exists at the time they submit for development. And if it was inefficient in some way, then they would have to upgrade that sidewalk. But if it met the code at the time of their development permit, then there would be nothing further.
So, we could put in some semi-deficient sidewalks.
I'm just wondering, you know. I'm wondering if there is a way, though, for us, I mean, clearly, if it was going to be developed, the developer would have to incur that cost. You hate for us to spend the money to put it in and then it get developed right after that and they're just waiting for us to incur the cost.
Well, that's right. And I think we have to look at that almost with every piece of sidewalk that we put in. Is there a reasonable expectation that that property would be developed relatively soon? You know, then it might move down the priority list. If that expectation is not there, but the need is there, then it's just one of the things we have to weigh when we look at any of these projects.
And we also look to see if maybe some of these would qualify for the CBDG funds?
We're still waiting on the answer to the survey there, but no, that, yes, the answer to your question is that's still on our radar screen.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think, as you know, the requirement there is that it be used for the handicap component of sidewalks and that we create handicap connections where otherwise they don't exist. So, there's certain places we could use that. I know you know that well, and we're just waiting right now to find out if that's a good use of CBDG funds potentially, or if there's a better use. But it certainly is on the table.
I would just like to use the money for?
Agreed.
For something.
Agreed.
Go ahead, Chris.
You know, that kind of highlights this budget. The one thing that is funded in this budget, which, again, a number that would only come out if we choose not to do it, is we're still, because of a tremendous amount of twists and turns in negotiations with our ambulance providers to what's the right deployment strategy here in Milton, if we chose to move forward with the model that we discussed at the prior council meeting, which is to have the option of our own transport. Those numbers are reflected in this budget. So, again, there's some, it's a very conservatively-built budget that has just about everything we could think of that we might need to do in it. Numbers, as we refine at this point, they really just get, the numbers come down from where we are. They don't, in large part, go up unless you tell me you want to fund something that is not funded in this budget. I think I've captured your priorities, at least in the short term, at least in the next six months, to keep some of these projects moving along while we try to move them forward with capital projects. If you'd let me move, or go ahead, Mary.
No, just, Bill, do you have one question?
I have one more sidewalk question.
Okay, sorry.
And I think we had talked about this before. I thought it was in last year's budget. North side of Webb between Nine and Cogburn going over to Hopewell Middle School.
North side, yes, sir.
Is that included?
That's part of, it's one of our MARTA projects.
Oh, okay.
So, we've just gotten final design in on that one, so we're looking at that and hopefully, put that out to bid relatively soon in conjunction with the piece on the other side of, when we're, the other piece of Cogburn that goes up towards Road Plantation.
Right.
So, we're doing both of those, hopefully, under, the majority of that money under the MARTA, and then we will probably have some of the existing capital funds that we would use to finish off those two projects, is what we're anticipating.
Okay. And there's another gap there just south of the bridge on Cogburn.
Yes, we've looked at all the gaps going up Cogburn, and that's really where you start looking at some significant dollars. We were hoping to look for some TAP funding for that. We haven't heard final on that. I don't know that we're ready for that. Any of the alternative funding sources that we go after, they're currently looking for projects that have either gone through design or right-of-way an easement acquisition and are ready to turn dirt. So, hopefully, we can position ourselves in some of these projects to get to that point where we look at some of these big-dollar connections, that there'll be some alternative funding sources for us to use for those. But we did look at the whole connection down Cogburn in that application, in that initial application. We just don't know if we're going to be allowed to move forward with that.
Well, I guess the more important side would be the east side of Cogburn, rather than the west side, though. There's quite a significant run of sidewalks on the east side of Cogburn. There are a few gaps in there, though. Probably be less expensive to do the east side than it would be the west side, so.
Well, the east side, under the current plan, I think, is five foot versus 10 foot, which is on the west side, so that certainly saves some expense. We just start looking at where are those connections, where are you really trying to get? You know, up to, you know, we've got St. Francis and the middle school and everything on the west side of the road, the park on the west side of the road. You do have a number of existing sidewalk sections along the west side of the road. So that is one of the things that we try and weigh in when we evaluate these sections. But if you'd like, we can have a further discussion on the costs that we've estimated on those sections, as well as we can look at the overall sidewalk layout, and just look at how we prioritize where those connections are. Even though we've got 70 miles worth of sidewalk throughout the city, they're not very close in a lot of places to being connected, so we try and look at all of that when we prioritize our sections.
Okay, just one sidewalk?
Nope.
Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, let me just finish one last thing here, which I didn't mention, which I need to mention, is that I believe, with your approval, we're going to attempt to restructure our IGA that we have with the City of Johns Creek for the delivery of IT services. This was more at their request, and I guess it's at my request as well, is that we're going to try to pull out of that agreement, the position that Dave is in, and not, no longer outsource that to the private company that Johns Creek has it outsourced to. We can save ourselves just over $74,000 by doing that in this fiscal year. What we will continue to outsource are those things that we don't need on a 1.0 FTE basis. GIS is a prime example. A .4 of a GIS technician worked perfect for us. So there's some things that I believe Johns Creek was going to ask anyway, and that I believe we could consent to. They're restructuring their contract a little bit that they have over there, which causes that a trickle-down effect for us to restructure ours. It makes sense to bring Dave on board, and bring him back on board. He was on board, then we moved him out, and now we're going to bring him back in, hopefully. But to continue to IGA, or agree with Johns Creek, those things that make sense at this point now for us, you know, to move with whatever makes sense today, and that's to keep the GIS function in that intergovernmental agreement. The other neat part about that is, as long as we keep the intergovernmental agreement open, what it does is allows us, on a à la carte basis, if we need to, to buy on a daily basis, somebody to backfill Dave, should we end up with a problem where all of a sudden Dave says, I'm going to be gone for, you know, two weeks, and don't want anything bad to happen to Dave. But if he comes in and says, I got to, you know, I got to have a surgery, and I'm going to be gone for two weeks, I have now an option that's not temporary help, to be able to still buy on a daily basis. The people that understand and know our system, we're just not going to have the direct link to the IXP Corporation that we have now through Johns Creek. Does that make, have I totally made that unclear, or is that clear? At the end of the day, it saves us about $75,000. Okay, yes, let's take questions on budget now, and then we'll maybe move into capital projects and priorities.
I was going to ask about capital projects, so.
Well, that's a great segue. And, okay, so the four documents that you had that came in probably one email. One is the budget document itself. That would be the operating budget of the city and the request. It will show about two years of history and the current year request. One of the documents that you'll see is the capital projects. See the capital projects account that shows all of the projects. What you want to recognize there is that any funding that remains after 2013 is carried over to 14, because it's a project length budget. And anything new that we're suggesting that you would add to it is in the fiscal year 2014 budget request document. So for example, if you had that one pulled up and you saw that we had vehicle replacement reserve and police of 20,006, 23, and we say in 14 we want to add 172,035 to it, in essence, what you would do is create a vehicle replacement reserve that would be $194,000. And that's how you would read that going all the way down, and there's then projections up to 2018 on some things. Okay? The other document that you'll see, there's one that's initiative request. That's the initiatives that the staff has requested. You can see there's some notes and then some funding. And you can see of the, go ahead and pull it up for me, of the 1,000,000, that was requested, at this point, 221,000 has been funded in the budget, so almost a million of that is just on hold. And we'll see, as we navigate through this contract with the ambulance provider, if that number stays where it is. And the fourth and final document is a capital request with grant funding. Really not a lot of movement in that this year, because we funded those, mostly the intersection projects currently, and they're all funded. There's one opportunity that requires us to do some housekeeping this year, and that's to remove the money from the LCI, because we functioned, we did that in-house and go a forming a little bit up all the way. And that's all that really happens this year. So there's really not a lot of movement in the capital grant fund this year. The fifth document you'll have is a document that I have got to thank Councilmember Thurman for helping me put together. I chicken scratched a bunch of stuff and PDF'd it and sent it to her, and I said, hey, is this what we were talking about this morning? And she returned with a nice email that said, yeah, I think that is what we were talking about in here. Look, I put it in a fancy Excel spreadsheet for you. I like this. We were having a discussion, and it was one that we are all going to have tonight, I hope, as to priorities of some capital projects that we keep talking about. And those three projects are the build-out of Bell Memorial Park, now that the land has been acquired, the construction of a city hall facility, and the completion of a public safety complex, or police station, fire station, or whatever you want it to be on Highway nine. And I made some assumptions as we're putting this thing together, but they're fairly well-educated assumptions. And it just happens that they can be fairly neatly done for the purposes of this discussion by saying that if each of those projects were put on a plane, we could be in the ballpark by saying each project was a $10 million project. Now, one's probably an eight and a half million dollar project, and one might be 11, and one might be nine. But we know that the prices that we've gotten on the public safety building are somewhere in the nine to 10 million dollar range. We've seen a number as high, although there's no way that it would be built out at $12 million in Bell Memorial Park. I think there's some line items in that report that aren't necessarily accurate. As well as then starting to look towards the city hall complex, that one we really are taking a shot in the dark. But for the purposes of a discussion that would allow me to understand your priorities, if we were to say each of these projects is a $10 million project, the question that we sought to answer was, how could we do these three projects over the next decade, and at the end of the decade, not have any debt? And how can we do that so that we can structure complete projects on what kind of a timeframe, with what kind of debt issuance that we're comfortable with, with what kind of funding out of the general fund we're comfortable with, that gets us the capital projects that I believe you all want us to be moving forward on? And what gets that done, and what gets that done, so that at the end of 2023, we can say we're not carrying debt on these projects? I don't believe that we're in a position at this point where we have to go up for a $25 million bond referendum. I think our finances are strong enough, our outlook is right enough, but that's not something we need to necessarily sit here and have the conversation about. What this spreadsheet does, and I'd be happy to sit down with each of you individually, and probably would like to do that at some point in the near future, to walk through some of these options and get your feedback, is it kind of shows that if there's project costs attached to these three things, what they look like, how many years we think that they take to get done, and then what it looks like against a calendar, so that we look at our bottom debt line and the debt carryover line, structured as you move across the top of the spreadsheet into some of the different options, how we can get that debt line to stay less than $10 million at any given point. And I think that's a critical kind of a benchmark for us, because we're kind of comfortable that if we looked at our debt capacity, that's a number that is doable with our level of revenues, with our level of expenses, and it's also one that's doable to retire it within the 10-year period. And that's, I think, really important, that we can say we can do that. And then all becomes, you know, what's the priority of the council? And, because these things have to happen in some sort of a sequence. They can't all happen in 2014, and then we pay them off over the period of whatever time we pay them off. I guess they could, if you directed me that you would rather do a bond referendum than see if the voters want to vote on all three together. But with there being the likelihood that there's some new revenues going to come into the system, come into Milton, what does that look like over the next, over the next 10 years? We tried to insert some dollars in here for when the debt service payment related to Fire Station 43 is finally retired in 2019. There's obviously additional capital dollars that would come into our budget. If the sales tax revenue were to be phased in, we've been contemplating for that in here, so that we did all of a sudden show that we had an increase in the full amount of the revenue that we believe will exist in the first year. Long story short, I guess what I'm kind of looking for, very high in conceptually, because then I can hone in this calendar a little bit, or hone in this timeline and bring you back a better example, is of those projects, there's got to be one that your constituents in Milton are telling you is their priority. And then there's got to be what they're telling you is number two, and what they're telling you is number three. I think, and I believe, that based upon some of these funding strategies, we can get all three done in the decade. And I believe we can get all three done in the decade, and we can get them all three paid for in the decade. But I need your help telling me which one goes first, and which one goes second, and which one goes third. And then I can, then I can put all that on paper and bring it to you, and we can move forward. It also, and I'll start to take questions, it also helps me make determinations on this space, because I get a much better term on rented space if I don't limp it along six months at a time. And if I know I can shoot for a date that we're really going to, that we're going to seriously shoot to, that helps me extend this once without having to continue to extend. I've now talked too much, and I'll be happy, Mary, to take questions.
Okay. Yeah?
In all the options you've included here, what I like about it is that we've got the parks built out within three years, and all of them, except for the aggressive parks when we do it in two. I think that's good. I also noticed that the land acquisition for a city hall, we were looking at that in 2014. That makes sense, obviously, because we're going to show the developers that we're serious about doing that. The rest is really a question of how much pressure we think we can sustain. And, you know, from what I've seen in all the options here, parks and buy the land for the city hall, if we can do all that at the same time, that's my priority first, the way you have it set up. Other than that, I mean, which one of the other five, really the question is, you know, whichever puts us under the least amount of pressure financially. That's my thought.
I think I've heard the council loud and clear that it's important that we get moving on parks, which, you know, and all had started moving in the same direction. So I've heard you loud and clear, which is why, in fact, on all of these options, yes, that does show as though it's a two to three-year phase. And I get it, I get it. So I guess, okay, so let's, if there's any more discussion points, I'm sitting here taking notes.
I have had, you know, one citizen mention tonight, for example, that they'd like to see a city hall being built instead of a roundabout. You know, I would say, I think, from our citizens' perspective, and what we have a need for in our city, that parks is a priority. As we talk, I, city hall, public safety building, obviously, is important, but we have that property. I believe city hall, if we're moving forward, should be a priority, just number one, while the land is, you know, rather than wait on that. Plus, the difference with that, although I know it's not a total swap, but it allows us to move out of leased space to pay for that. So it's not a, you know, a net-net total expenditure. There's a cost, there will be a cost to it, but it's also, there will be a cost savings as we move forward with that and pay that off. So, you know, I mean, that's kind of the direction that I see, and then again, public safety too, but maybe in those three phases. But that's just my opinion, okay?
Okay.
Obviously, the big variable out here is the loss. Not only how much, but when we would actually receive it. And I think, once we know that, we can put a definitive plan into place. I think the other variable is the original public safety building we had designed included court, where we were going to put our council chambers, at least temporarily. I had talked to Chris about the possibility, if we had moved court to a building along with the council chambers in the city hall, how that would affect the cost of what we would need for a public safety facility. And he thinks it'd probably save, what, three, four million?
Two to three.
Two to three million, if we ended up with the, and if you think about it, the court uses a very similar kind of room as a city, as your council chambers, and they hopefully don't ever use them at the same time. So it would, it would make sense that maybe...
That would be fun.
That would be interesting. But that would, you know, minimize the amount of space that's just not being used on a regular basis, if the two of them were put together, and we could find a way to do it such that, you know, there wasn't a safety issue with the court being as part of city hall. I think that would give us a little bit more flexibility, too. But personally, I think we need to get started on the park as soon as we know what the number is for the local option sales tax. I am still optimistic that we will find a way, not only to get all of our future money immediately, but maybe some of this 2013 money that we were supposed to have gotten, that would be over period of time.
Let's not go too far on that topic during an executive session.
Yeah. But, you know, I would like to see that, you know, once we know what those numbers are, then we can, I'm ready to get moving on the parks.
Okay. Can I get just a general reaction to, council member brings up an interesting point about the court and the council chambers together. I mean, we, when we kept them separate in this original design, it was going to, it was going to multipurpose as a council chambers until such time as we could build one. Those are typically spaces you build very different, right? You build the council chambers, it's probably built differently than the security-laden building of a courthouse. This room, it goes without question, doesn't make a great courtroom. It makes okay city council chambers, because it has a wall of windows. I'd like to get your initial reaction to that, and you don't have, you can change your mind later if you want, because we're not going to do anything with it the next week. But the general rule of thumb is I have, if there is a rule of thumb, I guess there's a rule of thumb in everything in life, but the rule of thumb that I have heard in talking to other cities who've built these things, is that once your population gets to about 35,000 people, that's when you start to see distinct spaces for council and court. Now, uniquely, we're at 32661, so how about that, for being right on the fence? Is anybody passionate one way or the other? Do you think that room should be the same room? Because you're going to build it probably to the stronger need than the lesser need, meaning if we're going to build a court and a council chambers together, it's probably going to be built to the security needs of the court, and the council will just happen to function there. Are you okay with that? Do you like that? Do you want to think about that and let me know? I mean, that's a real question. I do need an answer, because it does, in large part, affect this whole plan, as to whether or not this building that we've designed on Highway nine potentially has a redundant space in it.
Because it is a two to three million dollar difference.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Bill?
It's expensive finishes.
Can I comment on that, too? And since we're talking about two structures now, city hall and public safety building, I'd like to see us revisit the whole concept of programming both of these structures, ensuring that we're not duplicating any spaces in either one of these structures, and consequently, reestimating the cost of, we haven't done in city hall, we know approximately what it is, but reestimating the cost of public safety. And if it makes more sense to put it over on city hall site, and with a dual purpose of a council chamber and a court chamber, I'd think that would be a worthwhile exercise. With courts, usually council meetings and court sessions are not in the same time of day, or the same day of the week either. So I'd hate to see us, you know, duplicate that space when they're not used effectively and efficiently.
Okay. And keep in mind that where we've gotten to this point is, we are, we've designed a building that we decided early on would be police and fire in a court facility that would multipurpose as the council chambers. We made that decision a while ago. That building is designed. Okay, so any deviation from that, we really go all the way back, which is okay if it's going to be out a couple of years. We can, you know, we've done a good bit of work to get to where we are today with that, with that building. If the building needs to change, it certainly can. But I don't, there's really no exercise to do at this point to compare what it would look like at city hall versus court, because they don't have city hall design. So we've got a general idea of footprint and space needs. But as far as programming, that, there's no city hall building out there that's designed at this point. When we started down the design route, we'd obviously end up with a, probably a year, year and a half long project.
Well, and that was my point. Now that we're talking about city hall, let's go revisit... Now that we're talking about city hall, let's go revisit the whole issue of programming each one of them and making sure that we're not duplicating spaces.
And just for...
And we can always redesign something.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Yes, yes, you're right, we can. I want to throw up my plug for public transportation just while I'm, well, it's on the top of my mind. It's another reason why I like the court on Highway nine, but is that I really believe a court should be serviced by public transportation. So if we're going to even talk about moving that, one of the real downfalls Alpharetta has seen because of the location of their building is people walk up Rucker Road to get to court because more than, you know, 20, 30% of the people that come to court are coming there because they don't have a driver's license or serve to have it revoked while they're there. So public transportation is a good option in that circumstance. But, okay, yeah, well, if, if, if we're going to pop them open again, we, we can, we'll pop them open and, and take a look.
Would it be a different kind of court room if we were not having to anticipate using it also for our council chambers?
Well, I guess we were under the mindset that when we, when we designed the courtroom in the building that's, that's designed at this point, in the Highway nine building, it's a courtroom. We built it as a courtroom that we were going to let you all occupy until we built you a council chamber. So yes, it was built to function as a court, meaning it probably had, you know, no windows, you know, below 12 feet or whatever the standard is, that you've got light from the outside but not light from the street. And it's got, you know, probably a single bench as opposed to a dais. And, you know, some of those things that in the short term you can work with and, and multipurpose, knowing it's not forever. But if we're going to build a forever joint room, it probably builds very differently than the one that we have designed at this point for the Highway nine building. Because we built it, we did, we built a courtroom that we were just going to save the square footage of this room until we built you something to crap out.
And I guess to take that question a little further, probably could, just as though this room here is not built as a courtroom, you know, you could flip the coin, and if you did, the city hall and the council chambers temporarily could work as a courtroom till, till the real courtroom is built too. You know, again, looking at it all different ways, but...
Okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm hearing tonight that we're on, as fast as we can humanly possible, begin parks construction. That's a priority one. Securing the land for city hall would be a priority two. And then programming a, a city hall plus police plus fire plus court in some format and figuring out what goes where so that we don't duplicate would be three. Okay. Y'all, thank you. That's been, that's been a discussion we've needed to have for a long time because that will now give me the direction I need to move forward with your priority.
Is there any other questions in general on the budget? Again, this was an exercise to put it in front of you and to dig into it. Obviously, we'll be going over it in September, and Chris and Stacy are available all the time for questions and visual direction on future capital projects.
Anybody wants to come in individually, collectively, as long as there's no more than two of you to talk through it, we're open to that at any point you want to.
All right, do we have any public comment on that?
We do not, sir.
Then Sue, if you don't mind, call the next item.
Our final item is discussion of changes to the City of Milton Charter. Mr. Ken Gerard.
And here, I'm going to hijack this one too. So you put everybody else's name on it, then you sit down and you say, hey, can I take this one? And everybody says, sure. He's here. Yeah, we're going to talk just quickly about these charter changes now. You know, there's a process that goes for us to clean up the home rule areas of the charter that we can change. The General Assembly changed the ones that they had to change, and now it's up to us to change the remainder of the ones that the Charter Commission recommended. And really, I'm not here tonight never intended to hope that we opened up this whole document again because I think we've, we've been down that road. We've talked about all these. You all have adopted resolutions. You've seen what the home rule charter changes are, and they're going to be published for the next agenda. The one thing I do want to bring forward to you tonight, though, and ask you the question on, just because I was having a hard time bringing it forward without asking a question, is one of the things that is contemplated in this document that was the recommendation of the charter change is the way we as a city or you all as a council adopt ordinances. The way that the charter is written today, as, as well as the way that the city ordinance is written today, specifies how you do that. It specifies that in less than an emergency situation, the document will be presented publicly twice with more than 24 hours apart for the consideration of the council. And if you all adopt it after the second time, it will become law. One of the recommendations of the Charter Commission, and this is the one I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with, is to change that from being that way to where it actually appears for two public hearings, meaning the first presentation would effectively go away and an ordinance adoption would come forward the first time as new business and the second time as unfinished business for a full public hearing both times. And I'm absolutely fine with that. But it just felt as though I was fixing a problem that wasn't broken. Because I don't know that we necessarily have a big problem with the way that we adopt ordinances today. It doesn't seem as though that is a broken process where there's all of a sudden the public is crying that we do not have it available to them, that they can't comment enough, that we don't receive enough to comment, either ahead of time or during the event. So I just, I want to make sure I don't lead us down a road, even though it was the recommendation of the Charter Commission, so certainly, yeah, I'm kind of inserting myself here, maybe where I belong, maybe where I don't. But I'd like to get your feedback on that as to whether or not, as we officially bring these forward, if you find that there's enough of a problem with the way we adopt ordinances today that we want to make it more difficult by law, then we can always challenge ourselves to become better than the law. But as soon as we make it the law, then it becomes the law. And that's really the narrow scope that I was hoping to talk about with respect to the charter changes tonight. You know the rest of them. If there's any of them you want to bring up, it's advertise such that we could talk about any of them tonight. But it was with that narrow and defined scope that I was hoping to get some feedback.
So can you give us some examples, Chris, where you think having a different method or process would have been beneficial for us or where the current process didn't serve the city the way it should have?
I can't, but I can recount for you what I remember of the conversation that the Charter Commission to be when this discussion was even coming up. And that was the fact that if there's ever an opportunity for public input, we should, we should take it. And if somebody was traveling when it was in first presentation and, or if they were traveling when it was in unfinished business but not traveling when it was in first presentation, if we had had a public hearing for it as opposed to just reading it into the record, we potentially would receive more public comment than we're receiving today. Or conversely, it happens from time to time when we bring something forward in first presentation and it works through a work session and it makes some, what Ken would determine to be non-substantive changes that would require us to start the process over. By the time we get to the second read of it, if it has changed at all between the first presentation and the final adoption, is that acceptable or is it not? You know, I sent an email to our staff at one point, said, we can't publish a cat and adopt a dog. And that's kind of the truth, is you can't publish one thing and then all of a sudden tweak the heck out of it and adopt it real quick and hope that it withstands the scrutiny that it needs to withstand. I'm all about being transparent. I'm all about being open to public comment and getting all of that. It's the question about whether or not you all might want to move to that in, move to a different model in practice or whether or not you want to force us to have two public hearings in how we adopt an ordinance when we don't do that way today. That was the discussion was, would, would we get more public comment?
Right. Well, I mean, in general, it's rare that we get a lot of input, you know, when we're, when we ask for it. So I don't really see that. I, I'm in favor of giving people more options to, to comment because of what you said. But I was more interested when you start talking about the, you know, you don't want to fix what isn't broken. I didn't know if there was some history that, you know, I wasn't aware of where, where the current process causes to challenge or if we had it done a different way, it would have been better. But I, I don't think that's the case. So I would be in favor of just providing citizens more options for input.
And the interesting point, though, is that, and Chris already alluded to it, you know, the charter as it says, says right now, says that these ordinances shall be adopted to whatever processes you set in place. Here's your minimum. If you wanted to, if you wanted to adopt the policy to make that more exacting, you could. Once you do it by way of the charter, however, you can't go back below that threshold without changing your charter, which is interesting because we're, you know, we're already doing that with respect to member city appointments as far as boards and authorities. We're trying to lower it a little bit in the charter, still giving you the ability by way of your ordinances to make it as exacting as you want to. This would be exactly the opposite of that.
Okay, so let me restate what I think is a good idea. The idea is to hold ourselves to as high a standard as we'd like and making sure that the minimum standard is declared in the charter.
Okay. Having said that, what you would have, then you would not, I interpret that to say you would not seek to change the current method.
Right.
Okay.
No. What's, what's your experience, Ken, in other jurisdictions?
You know, it, it varies. It does. I have seen some that require a single public hearing. I've seen some that require public hearings in front of two different entities, for instance, like a planning commission and a council or board of commissioners. And of course, not unlike what you do here with zoning, zoning text amendments. But the reality is one public comment provision is perfectly fine. One, and candidly, too, my experience in Milton has been much like Councilmember Longoria said, and that is, except for some fairly rare exceptions, you don't receive a, a lot of feedback.
Have you seen challenges to that in other jurisdictions?
I haven't. In fact, candidly, the only time I see challenges with respect to adoption is in the zoning context, and you all have that covered very, very nicely.
Matt?
I, I agree with what Joe said initially was that we should open ourselves up to any public comment that we want, but we're not necessarily not allowing public comment in the first presentation anyway.
That's correct.
Because if they wanted to speak on that regardless, they could do that.
That's correct.
And I think that, that discussion at that point in time, public comment should be welcomed. But the primary thing is when we get to the vote. So I, I think that the way we have it right now would be fine. The only situation I could think of where we were scrutinized recently over anything was really the mediation thing that we're doing for our property owners on Highway nine and the Bethany Benner section. Just some people were, were saying some things that I don't think were necessarily true, just perception. And I'd like to, you know, make sure that people have every opportunity to speak, know that they have an opportunity to speak, but they have that now.
Correct.
We just may need to advertise that a little better in some sensor form. I don't know.
And I've got to tell you, I can't remember a time, and I've been here since the very beginning, I can't remember a time that somebody has wanted to speak that this council has told them no. And, and I can say that a hundred, you know, a hundred percent of the time, that we've even taken public comment when technically by our, probably our rules of procedures, it's not necessarily allowed.
I agree.
Anybody else?
So what I, I mean, this is going to come forward next Monday in first presentation of all places.
Can we comment?
And we'll take as much comment as anybody wants to give. But I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, at least with respect to this change, that we might be better served with maintaining the status quo at this point, recognizing that if it, we could always change it at any point. But right now, I, I simply can't tell you, I perceive a problem. So we'll move forward with the charter changes as you have them and as they've been presented with this one minor modification that the city attorney and I will make this week prior to Thursday's release of next Monday's meeting agenda. Great. That is all I have.
Is there any discussion or whatever? I'm open to adjourn.
Nice.
We'll adjourn the meeting.